I call this meeting of Slovenia City Council for July 17, 2023 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stow?
Here.
And Mrs. Westfall?
Mrs. Westfall is excused. Six members of City Council are present. Therefore, a quorum does exist this evening. We welcome you all to our council chamber. I think there's one group over here for Dottie. But we have also a representative of the League of Women Voters. Just one person over here. You win. There's more people. Again, we welcome you all and invite you to join us in our pledge of allegiance this evening, led by Mr. Frye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda. I believe you found your covering spots tonight as informational items probably be in C, the minutes from the Planning Commission and the Board of Architecture Review Meeting held last week as Wednesday in this council chamber. I have no other additions to add. Mr. Frye?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Additional items. It's a long agenda already. Plenty to do tonight. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Staff? Wait a minute. Staff members? Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroyer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Ms. Priney?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Now, we'll take that motion?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda for this evening's meeting is approved. Agenda item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on June 20. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move adoption of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of June 20, 2023, as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the June 20, 2023, meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. We'll move right on to agenda item five, which is one of the best things that happens in these council chambers, which is to recognize people that have contributed to our community or to the institutions that make Slovenia what it is. A great place to live, to work, and to raise your family. And I invite Dottie to come on out here with me. Hi, Dottie. I have a proclamation here. I gotta turn it this way so I can read it. Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Dottie Zeiger, Executive Director of Slovenia Area Family Services, will be retiring August 1, 2023, after many years of service to the community. And whereas she started volunteering at SAFF in 2002 and soon after was offered a paid position as an administrative assistant in 2007, Dottie took on even more responsibilities, including social service coordinator. And whereas in 2018, 2019, when the position of Executive Director opened up on the SAFF Board, the Board approached her and encouraged Dottie to take the position. And whereas since then, under Dottie's leadership, the organization continues to grow and provide vital programs and services for those in need, including the food pantry, a community garden, senior commodities, parent workshops, free GED classes, summer enrichment camp, holiday assistance, a youth diversion program, and more. Now, therefore, I pray that Stow Mayor do hereby proclaim today, Monday, July 17, 2023, a Dottie Zeiger Day in the city of Slovenia. Congratulations.
I just want to thank my board this year. My staff has been amazing. It's been amazing 21 years working with this organization that is so close to my heart. Very sweet meeting, but thank you all for making the last 21 years. Some of you, I've been 21 years. We've been working together. So thank you all for being here tonight here. I appreciate it.
That's appreciated.
Can we put the board behind you and Dottie? You guys come forward.
Sure.
Can I come around with you?
The board of the City Council. Your board?
Yeah, the board.
My board members.
Your board people.
Dottie, anybody who wants a picture? We're very small. Do you want the whole thing? Come on, see you now first. Come on, guys. Come on, guys.
No.
Can you get us all? They're skinny every day.
Right-hand man.
It's pretty bad. Why might be?
Every bed she's...
Always been there.
Oh, no. Can you get us in here?
I don't know what the guys would do if they make a move there.
Congratulations.
Nothing personal.
That's okay.
We understand. We know how exciting this is.
Well, keep up the good work.
Now is agenda item six. We have a representative of the League of Women Voters, the Toledo-Lucas County Branch, to present information on the August Issue One ballot to change the Ohio Constitution. I need you to come on up to the podium and introduce yourself. You can hand out. I know you have handouts. If either now or afterwards is fine.
I'll get them right in your hands.
Thank you.
This is generated by Bolt411.org. And for every election, the League collects information about candidates and issues. And it's free to visit there. We send out questionnaires to all of the candidates. And it's good information. It's nonpartisan and you get to decide for yourself.
I'm sure that everyone at this table has received requests for candidate information from your organization.
I'm positive you have.
And filled them out.
And some do, some don't.
Who wishes if you don't?
It really makes certain candidates look bad if they don't answer. So just to tell you a little bit about me, my name is Sue Rumpel. I grew up that far from here on Lexus Road and went to it for high school. I married and moved out to Swanton because my husband worked for Owens Corning fixing their jets. I've been in the League for 45 years and we support...
They're flying jet engines on their planes. That's why you're at Swam. That makes sense.
Yeah, the jets. Flying jets.
Yeah.
That's an unusual profession.
For corporate big shots, yeah. Not for you and I. But the League really works hard to register voters and bring voters to the polls. They feel very strongly about this Issue One. It is a change of the Constitution and there are pros and cons to it. And I'm not going to go. I'm not going to take a lot of time. This explains both pros and the cons, and you get to decide for yourself. But especially if you can keep saying to your people, we are having a special election on August the 8th, and there's only one issue on the ballot, and it's this one. It's very important. So unfortunately, this is a political ploy to yea or nay because they don't want the voters to turn out, you know, because it's a special election. And with everything that happened through COVID in our elections then, people are really confused because they just are. Like this, did we have a new, a spring special election too? This year or last year? I can't remember which one it was. But people didn't know what it was about. It was last year. It was last year. Yeah. And I wanted to like do a campaign to tell people there's an election. And a guy in my business group said, oh, that's silly. Everybody's going to know it because of all the commercials. But no, people did not understand. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate you and I hope that you...
Thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. All right. That takes us up to agenda item number seven, starting a long list of ones with Mr. Aller presenting. First one is an update on the road construction going on. We thought it timely. We're coming up to hopefully a switchover period here as July ends and August starts. Can't see Capelirius. I'm hoping he was still there. A couple of big events could be happening here at the end of July and the start of August. So, Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Construction on both of the larger projects that we have going on on Monroe Street are going quite well. I am going to knock. I know it's superstitious, but I don't care. The bridge deck was poured on the Silica Road Bridge on July 7th. And then we're working on getting the sidewalk poured within the bridge area this week. You may probably noticed asphalt paving. The base has been going down.
Begined today.
Yep.
Base course went down today.
Yep. They made great progress today. They actually were done early in the day. Didn't have to work very late in the day. They got, everything went very well with that process. So that is moving along. We have, you'll notice in the, in the letter, I have a potential, I have that italicized because that's, Mother Nature can change things. Construction mishaps can change things. But we're, we seem to be working, everybody seems to be working towards switching the traffic on Monroe Street from westbound to eastbound on August 4th. It looks like we'll be hitting that. At that, by that point, the bridge will be open. So Silica Road will be open. Judy Young will be open. And then we'll switch the traffic to eastbound on Monroe Street. So that's a, it's a big milestone in the, in the project. And we're hitting it a little ahead of schedule. We're not a lot ahead of, ahead of schedule, but we are ahead of schedule right now. So intersection there will be under temporary signal control until, until the fall when the permanent installation is done. We are working with the Arts Commission. They're doing an arts piece in the, in the middle. There is a, like a pie laster in the middle. Two sides of that will have recognition of Don Townsend, because that's the Don Townsend Gateway Bridge. Then the other two sides will have artwork pieces similar to what his style of art was. Can't do exactly because of the elements that it'll be looking at. It'll be similar. So railroad for the work crossing has started and they'll be continuing on that through next month or so. Columbia Gas will be in there installing their creek crossing at the bridge through, or excuse me, after Labor Day. And then we're still, right now, we were still anticipated, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, like I mentioned, but anticipate construction being done in mid-November on that project. Monroe and Roone, they're working primarily on drainage work in that area on the north side. So they still have probably another week, this week, to go yet before they'll be finished with that. You may have come through there and noticed that traffic can be kind of hairy and with some backups. The one problem with that, when we had, same, same situation we have on Monroe and Silica, when we had to go to temporary signals, those temporary signals can, can't be coordinated. They're not on the same controllers as what the full-scale system is. So we've been tweaking it, stealing a couple seconds from, you know, eastbound and putting it to westbound and maybe adding a couple seconds to Roone and things like that, trying to, trying to get it as good as we can. We think we have that from a timing standpoint, but our consultants have been working on and they think they've come up with an offset plan that can work better and improve the traffic even better. So we'll be making those changes and getting that implemented this week and see if that helps that area a little bit. So we kind of knew that was going to be a bug in that construction, but hopefully we can improve it a little bit here this week. So. Kerb work will start up then, late next week, this week or the, the week of July 24th. And then asphalt paving will start up in the westbound direction the first week of August. Once that is complete, we've got some additional work to be done on that westbound direction. And then we'll switch everything to the south side of the road and start working on that side right after Labor Day. And then we still anticipate construction to be done with that project the end of October. So things are going well. We haven't had, we've had minor hiccups, but projects are going very well.
I did witness the railroad company there working today. It was good to see them. Wasn't good seeing their backhoe blocking westbound Monroe Street. And less than, a lot of people on the job and nobody really directing traffic very well. I'm sure that you or your people might have seen that as well. I was a little surprised when the backhoe moved off, the fellow was facing west and he started to signal people not looking at them to come across. That's...
Across.
That was not, he was not an experienced flagger. Did not have a flag either. But it worked.
My, my entire career, when you, when we, when you've worked with railroad companies, they provided the flaggers. You paid them. They did all, they did everything. And that's the way this project was set to be. And then three weeks ago, the railroad notified, yeah, we're not, we're not going to do that. You guys have to do it. And, but they get to control them. And it's, so it's been, there's been some, some nasty grams going back and forth and trying to get that straightened out. I don't know why they, well, I do know why they changed. They have the same personnel issues that, that a lot of the players have. They just don't have people.
Okay. Well, it's good that they're here and getting going on.
Yeah. Yep.
Do you notice, does the railroad track remain passable to trains or is it going to be out of operation?
I don't believe it'll ever be out of operation or won't be available to trains. But I do know because of with some of the signal changes and that, and that kind of stuff that are happening, that the train patterns are being adjusted. I think that's so that they're not in there during the construction. So I do know that's taking place.
That makes sense. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Aller on his report? I like the one sentence, "A little ahead of schedule." Gives you a little bit of leeway if the weather turns up.
Right.
All right. Let's move ahead to agenda item eight, which has to do with the Roone Road and Ravine Road Project Right-of-Way Acquisition. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is moving forward. The design plans are in what's considered Stage Two. We should be receiving Stage Three fairly soon. And we will need some right-of-way. We'll actually have three property owners that will be purchasing either permanent indoor temporary right-of-way on this project. Two, two property owners on the northwest and southwest corners, and then some additional property from Flower Hospital. This property is on the northwest corner. It's in the name of Randall Ortmann and successor trustee. And it's just a small little sliver that we actually need from this property. As you can see, it's three one-thousandths of an acre. And we have reached an agreement with the owner in the amount of $450 and would recommend moving forward the agreement.
Wonder what that works out to per acre? All right. Any questions for Mr. Aller? Now, we have ordinance 59, 2023, to purchase this property. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 59, 2023 by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a contract of sale and purchase of real property for a portion of the property located, located at 5307 Haroon Road. Relative to the Haroon Road Ravine Drive Flower Hospital Intersection Improvement Project owned by Randall I. Ortmann, successor, successor trustee of the Patricia Ortmann Trust for the amount of $450, providing funds for said purchase, authorizing the payment of the purchase price, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 59, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 59, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to AC, another parcel. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This parcel is on the southwest corner of Haroon and Ravine. It's owned by a gentleman of the name, by the name of Robert Stewart. This is only six one-thousandths of an acre. However, on this corner, we did have much larger impact to, just in that small area, much larger impact to his property. We have to relocate a driveway. We have to do some additional grading along his ravine frontage. And there was just more of an impact. I think roughly about $16,000 of this $20,000 is reconstruction that, that needs to take place. It's called cost of cure because it's being required. We have to reimburse him for that work. So this one is a much larger value, but it's because of that cost of cure and things that he has to do with, with the property because of the project. So we are in agreement with the payment of $20,008 and would recommend approval of this agreement as well.
This is fall in line with what was anticipated in the budget?
Yes.
All right. We have ordinance number 60, 2023. There's no questions for Mr. Aller. Turn to Mr. Richardson to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number 60, 2023. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a temporary construction easement and contract of sale and purchase of real property for a portion of the property located at 5239 Haroon Road. Relative to the Haroon Road Ravine Drive Flower Hospital Intersection Improvement Project owned by Robert G. Stewart for the amount of $20,008, providing funds for said purchase, authorizing the payment of the purchase price, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 60, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 60, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Move on to agenda item nine, which is for a joint cooperation agreement with Northwest Ohio Transportation Safety Action Plan. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a program, the Safe Streets for All Grant Program was posted probably about a year, two, year and a half ago. And once the requirements and everything for that program came out, it was fairly clear that it was, it's a pretty cumbersome package to be able to do. And a lot of cities and entities were kind of shying away from it because of the, the amount of work that was necessary for the amount of money that was available. So what ended up happening was several, around the state, several organizations started to team up and do area-wide plans. And in this case, the counties of Fulton, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Wood all agreed to participate in the project and develop a transportation safety action plan. We will be part of that. We were asked to be part of it and will have, will be part of putting that plan together. And what this grant does is enables the entities that are involved to be able to recuperate some of that costs, recoup, I'm sorry, recoup some of that cost that they, they have in this. It's estimated that there will be $500,000 of effort put towards the action plan. The grant will cover $400,000 of that work. And then the cities and counties that are involved then will match that with 20% or $100,000. So this is a good opportunity for everybody in the area to, to get a, a general Lucas County plan put together and be able to be coordinated rather than each entity doing their own little thing and perhaps things not tying together well. So we recommend continuing to be a part of the program and authorizing the agreement for this project.
I have a question.
Mr. Hanum?
What do we expect our share of the $100,000 to be?
Will be a very, very minor portion of that. We're going to have, we're going to, our, our primary involvement is going to be meeting attendance and perhaps developing some, some maps. What, and all, we'll probably use, we already have our bikeway and alternative transportation plan put together for Slovenia and Slovenia Township. That'll be the core of what we, what we bring to the table. So I, I, our involvement is going to be fairly minimal on it. But being part of the group, it's always, there's always a benefit to having, having a chair at the table. So.
Yeah.
Seeing no further questions, we do have an ordinance for this, ordinance 61, 2023, safety issue. So I turn this to Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 61, 2023. All members, having received previous copies, I will read by title only. Authorizing mayor and director of finance to enter into a joint cooperation agreement on behalf of the, this city of Slovenia with the Lucas County Board of County Commissioners relative to the Northwest Ohio Transportation Safety Action Plan, Safe Streets for All Grant. I move passage of ordinance number 61, 2023 as an emergency measure. Second.
Moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 61, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 61, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. We're now up to agenda item 10. This is, we're looking for a agreement on a grant with the state of Ohio. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City administration was able to secure state appropriation funds as part of the state capital improvement program. And, and the project that had been submitted was improvements to the Plumber Pool Bath House, if you will. The proposed improvements to that facility include relocated locker rooms, community multipurpose room where they can have things like birthday parties and things of that nature, improvements to the pump and filtration room, concession room improvements. And the primary issue out there is ADA accessible restroom facilities. As I indicated, we were successful in obtaining those funds and have been awarded $200,000 towards the project. We'll also be coming to you shortly. We're redirecting... We'll also be coming to you shortly. We're redirecting another $100,000 in state appropriation funds towards this project, but have not received word from the state on that award yet. The current construction estimate for the project, it stands at about $414,000. We are working, excuse me, with Sage Art to attempt to value engineer some of that work and as well as, as well as taking a look at possibly phasing some of that work over a few years. This is, you know, anytime we can bring some of that state appropriation money back into the city, it's always a, a good bargain for the citizens. We do recommend typically the agreements, you know, we, we get approval to apply for the grant and, and sign agreements and all of that nature. Because this was a state appropriation rather than a grant application, that wasn't done, so that's why the agreement is coming to you at this time, so. But we do recommend approval of the grant agreement. And the plan for the project is to begin in September, October, after the swimming season and after the pooch plunge, I think is what it's called out there. After that thing, construction can start, so.
That's when filtering work is needed, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Aller on this requested agreement?
Just to make it clear, our deal with Sage Art is that we're responsible for maintenance of the pool and they, they operate it, right? Is that right?
I don't believe so.
It's, there's a portion.
We were bringing things up to good condition before they take over greater responsibility. And I had, and the city agreed to go out and try to find these grant funds to do that.
Okay.
The principal one, I thought, was the upgrade of the filtering equipment, but we've been able to do more than that now. I'm not sure. I need the law director to tell me, but I don't think we're gonna have this kind of responsibility in the future unless the agreement ends.
It's a 20-year agreement or, it's pretty long.
It is, I wanna say 10 offhand.
Is that, okay.
I don't 100% remember.
This is fulfilling a commitment that the city made to have them take over the operation of the facilities.
In return for support. Right, I remember.
Okay. All right, this is a...
A, a good job getting the grant, getting the money. Thank you, appreciate that. And so do our neighbors.
Okay, this is a building and grounds issue, so this down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 62-2023 and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a pass-through grant agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources relative to Sylvania Plummer Pool Improvement Project. I move for passage of ordinance number 62-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second?
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 62, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 62, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Okay, we're now up to the second page of our agenda. We're up to agenda item 11. We have one more here for Mr. Aller. This is the alphabet one, CMAC and CRP. I do know what CMAC stands for, congestion mitigation and air quality. It's easier to see CMAC. CMAC is where a lot of the funds for the silica road improvement intersection with Monroe Street are coming from. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is some additional funding available in the CMAC. There's $10 million available in this round. And then the carbon reduction program is a new program that was initiated as part of the bill, the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. And there's 4.5 million available in that program. You authorize a study, council authorized a study on April 3rd of this year to review the intersection control and take a look at it as a modern roundabout. And the roundabout is the recommended option for that intersection. The estimated project for that is just under $2 million, $1,988,896. We plan to request $1,035,100 in CMAC or CRP funding. You can submit under both programs and then Timocog kind of decides where they're gonna make the, the split and what program they put you in. Each program operates the same, so. Assuming that we are successful at, and we have strong feelings that we will be successful with that application, we would ultimately apply for Ohio Public Works Commission funding when that timing is right. And we would take, apply for about $694,000 for that. And then that would leave us with a balance of $259,671. At this point, all we are dealing with is the CMAC application, and we just ask for permission to move forward with that grant application.
These grants are all out several years. If successful, what construction year would you anticipate?
This project would be looking at 2027, possibly 2028, but we're, we're indicating that we'd like to do it in 2027, so.
I heard you say that you are fairly competent. You have good connections down at Timocog, do we?
We have pretty good connections.
Chair of the transportation or the transportation committee, that's our...
He has a pretty good understanding of how this works, yeah.
And strongly represented in Timocog, but the Timocog leadership has changed. As you know, there is a new chair, a new president down at Timocog, who I think is gonna change her, even her title, not to be president anymore. She might be executive director in the future or not too far, not too distant. She thinks that's more appropriate. We do have resolution seven, 2023 to authorize this application. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce resolution number seven, 2023 by title only. A resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance prepare and submit an application to participate in the congestion mitigation and air quality and carbon reduction grant programs managed by the Toledo Municipal Area Council of Government and to execute contracts as required. I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second?
Been moved and seconded for passage of resolution number seven, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and resolution seven, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item 12, this is requested legislation of contribution of $7,500 towards the cost of running commercials during the Dana Open. I did watch some of the coverage. I saw some of these. They didn't really mention Sylvania, but I can tell you, if you watched any of the coverage, particularly on CBS Sunday Afternoon, which lasted for three hours, Sylvania, Ohio was clearly listed on the graphic. Whenever they'd show the leadership of the tournament, what golfers were leading, it said Sylvania, Ohio. And the announcers in several cases said, "Coming to you from Sylvania, Ohio." I was pleased with that. It was a very positive review of the tournament and the LPGA, the golf course, and our community in this coverage, so it worked out really well this year. There was rain on Saturday, so I got to watch coverage that lasted also longer than I anticipated Saturday night. It went from eight to 10:30 or maybe even 11:00. Chief, that might have cost us a few extra dollars in overtime.
It did.
There was a four-hour rain delay. Didn't look like anybody got sent home. They just, they certainly didn't go home from the party deck behind number 17. That was talked about on the television coverage. They stayed. They were partying the whole time. We did have good representation on the golf course. I was out there on Friday myself. Really nicely done, well-run, speaks well of our community. Brian, I saw you out there. Anything you'd like to add?
Just that it went as expected and there were no incidents to report and all enjoyed the time, and even the mayor of Toledo came out on Sunday. It just was, seemed like a really good year for them. Hopefully it'll last.
I'm sure we'll be getting updates in the next few months. What a positive tournament for the LPGA. Hopefully they can help make it happen. I'm so too. All right, we do have this requested ordinance number 63, 2023 to authorize our $7,500 contribution. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 63, 2023 and read by title only. Authorizing the contribution of $7,500 towards the cost of running commercials promoting Northwest Ohio during the LPGA Dana Open at Highland Meadows Golf Club. Appropriating funds therefore, and I move passage of ordinance number 63, 2023 as an emergency measure.
Second?
Been moved and seconded for ordinance number 63, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 63, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Again, as we explained at the previous meeting, there has developed over the years, or apparent this year, a little difference between the income tax, the one and a half percent on the $1.75 million purse and our police costs for the, for this. We do not believe we're putting tax money into this. That's why I questioned the chief about overtime, but it's mostly the difference between the income tax paid by the tournament, not the income tax we guess at at the hotel or the restaurants or anything else. This is the purse, which is pretty hard and fast. Okay. Thank you. And I think we fit right in about where we should have on this list that's listed on here. Who put in what, what amounts of money? It seems like we were in about the right spot. Moving on to agenda item 13, 13, 14, and 15 are all the second ordinances as necessary for the property, special property taxes on this year's tax bill, property tax bills, which will go out in the bills for, during 2024. The first is for open drainage ditches. We've discussed this in the past, so I'll go right to Mr. McCann to read ordinance 64, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to reintroduce by title only ordinance number 64-2023 to assess a special tax upon the lots and lands described in the schedule referred to herein to pay a part of the cost and expense providing for the construction, maintenance, repair, cleaning, and enclosing open drainage ditches within the corporation limits of the city of Sylvania for the year ending December 31, 2023. I move passage of ordinance 64-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second?
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 64, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 64, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item 14 is a similar issue for maintenance of shade trees. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 65-2023 to assess a special tax upon the lots and lands described in the schedule referred to herein to pay a part of the cost and expense of providing for the removal and special treatment of shade trees for the purpose of controlling blight and disease of same, and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees and along the streets and within public right of way of the city for the year ending December 31, 2023. I move for passage of ordinance number 65-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 65, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 65, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Onto agenda item 15. This is for street lighting. This is a resolution five, 2023. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only ordinance number 66, 2023. Ordinance approving the assessment here to for authorized by resolution number five, 2023 for street lighting, levying said assessments, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second?
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance, I'm sorry, it was not a resolution. I don't know why I said that. Proposed ordinance 66, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 66, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Agenda item 16, this is approval of three vehicles to be offered on gov deals. Mr. Aller, you want to describe these vehicles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have, through previous authorizations that council provided to purchase new vehicles, those vehicles are now either in and in service or will be shortly as soon as we can get antennas. Of all things, we're...
We've been waiting a while on those vehicles.
Antennas. Never thought I'd see the day, but. Water department, we, is asking to dispose of a 2011 Ford F-150 pickup, and then the police department is looking to dispose of a 2013 Ford Police Interceptor SUV and a 2014 Ford Police Interceptor SUV. And if we don't receive bids, then we will dispose of them through scrap value, but based on gov deals, I do not think that that will be necessary.
And this is everyone's opportunity. If you always wanted to own a police interceptor, this is a good chance. All right. I need a motion to offer these on gov deals. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to offer the three vehicles as described in Mr. Aller's memo of the 17th of July on gov deals for disposal.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the offering of these three vehicles on govdeals.com. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any committee reports or committee referrals to be made at this time? Included in your council packets were the second quarterly reports. I know I may take advantage of these. I always encourage you to take a look at them. They do hold a lot of information, boring as it might be, there are some exciting things in there. You also received tonight at your council places, as added on the agenda, both the planning commission and the board of architectural review minutes from last week. That brings us to the end of our business for this evening, unless there's something to add.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I had to do something quickly, and I meant to say at the top of the meeting, and I apologize, I slipped my line. I just didn't know if we could get a quick 30-second update on the inside the five lot, if they broke ground or if they're still in contract and all that. We...
Yes, I did...
No to the breaking ground. I sure haven't seen that.
Yeah.
But I thought too, but I didn't know if I missed something and I didn't...
I do have an update. I did receive an update from their attorney last week, I believe. They have been, I'm just gonna pull up his email so I can quote directly. Set revised building plans to Lucas County over two months ago, addressing initial county concerns. The county has yet to comment on these revised plans, and as a result of the county delay, our client is unable to obtain construction bids, contracts, or a building permit. And then they, he requested our help if we have any contacts at the county to inquire about the status of the county plan review, then the project can proceed. Once the bids are approved, our client will obtain construction bids for the work. Our client is ready to begin as soon as these steps are completed, so.
Wait on the county.
Waiting on the county.
The second part of Mr. Richardson's question is they, are they in default of contract? Are we allowed to extend this?
We can certainly grant them an extension if...
Does that require like an official action? Because I believe right now they'd be in breach. I don't know if that's gonna hold them up at the county, and I don't know how this works.
Yeah, that wouldn't have any impact on the county process. I think for us to clean, just so we're clear, we can grant them an extension, and I will reach out to Steve Rhinebowl and request that we get that finalized for our appro, consideration.
Why don't we wait to do that till the county approves?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we wait to do that till we have the county approval so the extension is for the appropriate period, so we don't have to do it again?
Yeah.
I can tell you it can be very time-consuming to go through Lucas County or the city of Toledo plan approval. I know that from firsthand experience.
And you said they've been waiting two months already, is that what I heard?
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know, you know what's typical, or maybe, Mr. Mayor, do you know? I don't...
It comes and goes. Two months is not unusual, but I'd say it's longer than usual.
Sure, so hopefully soon.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're certainly not, we're certainly not gonna move on that, and we have... We're certainly not, we're certainly not going to move on that. And we have all the, we have all the remedy under, under the bridge. So.
I am concerned that they get it going, foundations in and undercover before winter weather. That would be my concern. And I'm sure that's their concern as well, or their pricing is going to change. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further issues, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and this council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, August 21st at 7:30 PM in these council chambers. Thank you all for attending.